Okay, the October 5th, 2016 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. To move to the approval of the agenda, we're very fortunate to have the Commissioner of Education for the state, Virginia Berry, here. And with the agreement of the board, I wonder if we could put her next so she could speak to us at the beginning of the meeting? Kenny?
I move that we approve the agenda where the change is just presented.
Moved by Kenny is her second. Second by Al. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, the agenda's approved with that change. So Commissioner Berry, we're delighted to have you here. Thank you for coming and glad you had -- hope you had a good day in the Oyster River schools.
I did. It was a really great day, just to see the work that you're doing, meeting with the students, the teachers. And I said several times, is this very -- is it just --
Yeah, we can hear you.
No, it seems like it's really loud. I don't want to be yelling at you. You know, so one of the things that we look for in schools, obviously, Oyster River is one of the highest performing districts in our state, and we're very proud of that for you. But one of the things that we look for in our schools is the quality of the leadership. And we know that the research that we've done in our own state, that leadership is absolutely critical. And I really want to commend Jay and his staff for the great work that's going on. Also, the importance of quality school boards. It's really, really essential that school boards put children first. And we know that you have to make very difficult decisions, lots of fiduciary issues that you have to face. But putting the children first is very obvious today. Meeting with the kids and going into the classrooms, the work that's going on, I think that what I loved was the engagement level of the students, every single place that I went. Even in the hallways, the students talking to each other, in the classrooms, doing problems, working collaboratively together, asking quality questions, and had an opportunity to meet with the teachers in the early morning, the teachers that are working on competencies. And you know, that's one of the areas that we're very focused on. Most people don't know that we are the third highest performing state in the nation. And that's something that we can only attribute to quality schools, educators, and leaders to keep us moving in that direction. Also, with the competency work, we are leading the nation. It sort of surprises everybody wherever we go when they start talking about, "Look at the great work that's going on in New Hampshire." And so I guess the way to sum that up is to thank you for this work. We view competency education as really personalized learning. And I like to explain it to parents as two elements of competencies. One, that a competency is really the student's ability to demonstrate their knowledge and their skills, their ability to show what they know. And also, that what goes hand in hand with that is confidence, that children that are competent become confident. And one of the things that we know as kids move forward in their future, it's going to be absolutely critical that we're preparing students for really an unknown future. We don't really know how this country occupations -- you probably have read several times that students graduating this year's class will have 15 to 20 jobs in a lifetime. It's hard to imagine. And of those 15 to 20, other than the healthcare area, we really don't know what they'll be doing. We don't have an idea. Jobs are changing every day. So the skills and the knowledge that students develop as it relates to research, being able to solve problems, to be critical thinkers, are all the kinds of things that students need. And you should be very proud of the work that's going on.
So we have some questions for her? I might get started, okay?
Okay.
What do you foresee the -- we have like the Smarter Balance test, which is a fairly time-intensive test that we give now, and only includes English, Language Arts, and Math. And if science gets added to that and social studies gets added to that, I could envision this monstrous test that our kids are going to have. Is there any movement to -- I guess I'd like to just figure your sense of how testing, what you foresee as testing that's going to be mandated by the state going forward?
Right. So this is a question that gets asked everywhere. It's a really great question, in different versions of that particular question. But the federal government requires, once a year, an assessment. And so New Hampshire has selected Smarter Balance, as you know, 3 through 8th grade. And thanks to lots of input from parents, teachers, policymakers, we decided to eliminate Smarter Balance at 11th grade and put into place the SAT. Very, very, very successful. And that happened as a result of getting input from all stakeholders. Like, why don't we give a test that's more meaningful? So we're, again, I'm very pleased to say that we put the SAT in what the federal government requires is an accountability system. How are we being sure that all our students are getting a quality education? And so this year, New Hampshire outperformed seven states that participated in the SAT as an accountability system, which means that when we decided to give all 11th graders one assessment, SAT, everybody was really concerned that students, the state scores would drop. In fact, they increased. So we've learned something. So where are we headed? So you know that we do have a PACE pilot on performance assessment. And those pilot schools, there are 10 schools currently involved, and they are not giving Smarter Balance every year. So at 3rd grade, they're required to give reading and language arts. And then the following year, they're using PACE. And then the following year, they're using mathematics. And so it's every other year, end-of-the-year assessment. And Smarter Balance is approximately two and a half hours long. So where we see our state going is, we are in the process right now of submitting another waiver. We are looking for greater flexibility in our state. And given the performance of our students and the continued monitoring that we are getting from Washington, we hope in our future will be every other year testing. Now remember, the assessments at the end of the year are tied to the formulas for federal dollars. I mean, that's the purpose of it. States are required to show the performance. So that's where we are, every other year. I'd like to make a point, though, that Smarter Balance was not intended to be referred to as a test. And I'm sure if you get a chance to speak with teachers, it is a diagnostic tool. It's computer adaptable. And so that means that every student that's taking that assessment is taking a slightly different form of the same assessment tool. And it was designed to give teachers information about concepts that students were not necessarily developing, or those concepts that students were exceeding in. So Smarter Balance really is a tool for teachers, a diagnostic tool. And you're probably aware, we do not report schools in New Hampshire on an A, B, C, D, or F. We eliminated that just about a decade ago. So we like to think of assessment, one of the things that we know from surveying schools, many parents think there's too much testing. But the state only requires one test a year. Now, when we go to the next-generation science standards, we will be, right now, developing a performance assessment. So it will not be your standard sit-down, bubble kind of test. It will be performance tasks that students will have to be able to demonstrate, just like you're doing in your competencies. So I think we'll have a wide array of different ways of assessing, but they will never be intended to, in any way, be a detriment to the school. They should be used more effectively as a tool.
Maria?
I guess I can't help myself, but --
It's okay.
Looking at society in general right now, I'm really, really thinking about, are we teaching the right things? The incivility, the lack of ethics, and the lack of knowledge of history. Are we focusing too much on the sciences and math and leaving these out, which has left us with the country -- most of my family lives in Europe, and I get daily Facebook posts saying, "What are you doing?" And what can we change to put our priorities on those kind of things?
Well, the first thing is an effective school board that recognizes the importance of well-rounded students. That's really critical. You know, our nation in general, you know, sort of jumps from things to things, so the emphasis on STEM. Our governor, he was very focused on STEM. She felt that was important for manufacturing, engineering, and then therefore, the implications for K through 12 in terms of mathematics and science. But remember, there are many people in our state that really wanted it to be called STEAM so that the arts were included. So I think as we move forward, the goal in education, public education, is to be much more interdisciplinary-oriented. As far as ethics and social behavior and those various kinds of what we call habits, mind, really have to come from communities. It's a local-controlled state, and it's very hard for me to say to a school district, "Well, you really need to be working on social, you know, social issues in your school," or bullying. So it really, the hands, it's in the hands of school boards and leaders in schools to make sure that we have environments, really seriously, that we have environments that are healthy environments for kids. So I know that in speaking with your staff today, you know, across the nation, and New Hampshire is very focused on whole-child development, socio-emotional development, that for a long time, schools rejected the fact that they had a role in that. But we have students in New Hampshire, kids in New Hampshire, that are going to school at 6:30 in the morning, they're having their breakfast at school, their teeth are being -- they're brushing their teeth, they're getting clothes in school, and they're there until 6 o'clock at night. So there's a wide range of issues that we're faced with, and opioid crisis, mental health issues. So my own sense as commissioners, with excellent leadership, with people that care, with a governance structure that is committed to the people across all age groups, New Hampshire is the third most aging state in the country. And so therefore, we have to be really connected to intergenerational ways of working with people. So we have our hands full. I don't have the exact answers, but I do know one thing. When a child has the opportunity to be in a quality environment, school environment, given the number of hours that they spend with us, the only way that those individuals, those kids that we're responsible for will be successful is they're cared for, and they get the support that they need to have opportunities to develop. And I'm optimistic, and I think the next month, we'll be hopefully talking the right language at that time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just thinking as you were talking, and then kind of implicit in the last sentence you made, how does your position, how do you relate with our state legislature? What is that relationship like? And as a school board, is there any way that we're able to have some influence and work with you to affect the legislature?
Right. So it's a really good question. So I think one of the things that's important is to remember that everybody here, including myself, vote our representation into place. So our relationship is based on the people that are voted every two years into these positions. And so, you know, honestly speaking, it's a very polarized state right now in terms of, you know, people, a great deal of interest in choice, moving funds away from our public schools into private and religious schools. It's a huge issue. So the relationship with the Department of Education, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Environmental Sciences, all of us, our relationship is based on public will. And so when we're working with very distinct groups of people, one group that understands the value of public education, the importance to our democracy, the importance to our nation, we're able to be able to represent the interests of our children. When we're working with another group that's looking to close down public education, we spend an enormous amount of time trying to help them understand that this may be antithetical to everything this country stands for. It's tough. So I think your question, the people that you vote in, that you have your representation, when they are pushing bills or trying to get us to do something, we're there if it's the right thing for children and families. But we need your help. I mean, I think it's very obvious to all of you where our state is right now.
And that maybe is kind of what I was trying to even understand even more. You come to places and probably you hear people saying, "We want this, we want that," and I'm kind of turning around and saying, "How can we help you?"
Well, what you're doing is what's helping me. People say, "Well, how do you like going to the schools?" The best part of any educator's job is to be with children and to go into a school when you walk through the door, like I did today, and you know, because you just know when you walk through the door of a school where something good is happening. You just know it. And it's a sad feeling when you don't feel it when you walk through the door, so that the work that you're doing, when I leave here today and I meet with my staff and I say, "I'm telling you, the school boards, it's where it's at." A quality school board really directs education in that community. And while I know it's a very complex job in terms of making decisions, looking to the future, having the quality that you, that everybody wants, and it's fiduciary balance in a state that's very complex in terms of financial abilities to support our schools. So yes, keep up the great work, and you're helping us. Because we can use Oyster River, I can go to another district where there is some pretty significant problems with the school board and say, "You need to look at what Oyster River is doing. You need to look at they're focusing on the children in their community, they're hearing what parents want," and so on. So that's the best way to help.
Maybe just one more question. We talked about this a little bit at dinner. Could you talk about the possibility of building aid that might be coming down the road?
Okay, so this is a little complicated. And I said today, some of the teachers did ask me about this because clearly they would love to have a beautiful, new, modern building for all the great work that they're doing. So right now, the budget for the state is biannual, so every two years. So we have just put in $50 million in the building aid budget. Right now, there are approximately 26 schools that have made requests for building aid funds. And the law, as it states right now, is that the only funds that can be dispersed to public schools is when there is imminent danger of, for health and safety purposes. That's the only time funds can be dispersed. So there, if the fifth, we have $62 million left in what they call the tail. It's the amount of money that the state of New Hampshire owes that they need to pay off. And then with the $50 million that's going in, hopefully in the budget, the governor will have an opportunity, the next governor, to either leave that $50 million there or to remove it. It has been removed through the last two budgets. But if it does stay there, that adds to the current $13 million that we have that will be distributed this year for schools that are in danger, imminent danger. So it's a list process, and I encouraged, if you were thinking even out into the future, to put an application in, just letting the state know of your intent. Because it's a process where if a warrant article is approved, then those funds will be directed, right now, only for imminent danger. If you put in for a new school, it would be the first one in almost 20 years. It's been a long time since a new school has been built using building aid. And so you would be on the list as a district. If your warrant article passed, even if it was 2022, you'd still be on that list. Every time a warrant article passes, the money's dispersed, you move up the list. If a warrant article fails, the person on that level goes to the bottom. So there's kind of this rotating process that goes on. So we're very optimistic. We hope that our next governor will leave the money in. Many schools are in great need of repair and maintenance because there is no requirement in the state of New Hampshire to repair or maintain schools. The total responsibility falls within the district. So that's the, I did encourage the staff to work with our engineer, Amy Clark, who will go through the, walk you through the whole process. And, you know, again, we're very optimistic. So the next biennial budget, two years from now, we would put through, again, a recommendation for $50 million. Because we're very well aware of the need for our schools to be not only redesigned, but to really think toward the future, because the repair and maintenance issue is pretty significant.
Other questions?
I did want to do one, I just wanted to comment and just pass around the priorities of the department, and I was really pleased to see that these are also your priorities. And I, one of our biggest issues is mathematics. And we agreed, every superintendent in a consensus-building model agreed to take on mathematics as a state. Because we just can't seem to move the needle in math. We have tried, and we have tried. So I was very pleased to see that Oyster River, in the middle school area in particular, plus I heard more about elementary and high school at dinner, but that you're taking that on. And I think you will see great results in taking mathematics as a priority area, not at the expense of other disciplines. But utilizing mathematics in critical thinking and solution-oriented solving of problems would be really, really outstanding. And I think there'll be great news coming out on the assessments. The final assessments will be coming out for SAT and Smarter Balance the first week in November. And just a little, little open door, Oyster River did very, very well. So we're very pleased with that. But these are the state priorities. Looking at career development, we have a very strong emphasis on college and career-ready. And we're trying to understand the implications of how do we prepare all students for careers, you know, for choices that they would have in work. We're referring to them as guided pathways. Personalized learning is exactly what you're doing in competency education, as I mentioned before. And also, looking at higher education programs, and are they preparing teachers for the future? It's a huge issue across the nation. And we're working very, very closely with all of our higher education, both public and private, to prepare teachers. We anticipate losing 38% of our teaching market over the next couple of years. There was a little bit of a slowdown with the state retirement system. We didn't lose as many teachers, but we are now beginning to experience retirements. And we want the best teachers in the field. And we'll have to steal them from Oyster River because there are so many today. Leadership pipeline, very, very important. We are looking to really develop principles that are courageous, principles that are focused on children, that are knowledgeable. And that's something that's a goal for the state of New Hampshire as we move forward. Many people will not choose to go into the principalship simply because the salary differential between principals and teachers is not very large. And so people would rather stay in classrooms. And then the last three is safe schools and healthy students, as we mentioned before, and continuous improvement. That good is not good enough, that even great schools can get better as we move to the future. And then I want to thank you for your full-day kindergarten move, because that was really a great move for your district and for the children. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to coming back again.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, Commissioner.
Public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. Don't blame Trump on the scientists. We didn't do it. We're the mathematicians. I think we're off the hook. I see you guys all have packets, and they have the information for the meeting. We're going to have a meeting on start time soon, and I would love to see the slides ahead of time, and I'm sure everybody else would, so we can be prepared when the meeting actually happens. Thanks, guys.
There a public comment? Hearing done, okay. Approval of the minutes? Could I have a motion to approve the September 21st, 2016 regular meeting minutes? Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 26 regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise.
So, excuse me, it's, what did I say? It's September 21st.
September 31st. Is the second one, Maria? Okay, are there corrections?
Yes.
Denise?
Yeah, on page six, at the bottom of the page, when I was talking about the Long Range Planning Committee, and it said, "Discuss the K-1 discrepancy," I would just request that it be spelled out kindergarten and first grade, so that, you know, it's not like a K-1 unit or something.
Are there other corrections? Sarah?
I'm open to feedback on this, but I was hearing, I was looking on page two, where Dr. Morris was addressing the rumors, and particularly one, the one that says the track had not gone over budget, there was guaranteed maximum price on the project. I guess to me, that wasn't clear enough, what the rumor was and how it was addressed. And so I guess what I, what I came up with was, the rumor was an error in measurement cost the district 80,000 more, while in reality, the district had a guaranteed maximum price on the field budget. So even though the contractor made a measurement error, the district did not pay more.
Okay. That's more specific, and I think that's accurate. So are there other changes? Hearing done. Could we vote on the approval of the minutes with those two corrections? All in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements and commendations and comments from the district?
Should someone move to approve them?
We did. We did that, yes.
Sarah, did you have that wording so you could give it to Laura?
Yes, I did.
Great, thank you. Okay. Is there okay, Kenny? Okay. Announcements, commendations, comments from the district? Suzanne?
There's been much going on in the high school, and I know Troy will speak about Spirit Week last week, but I also wanted to add a few bits of information. We started the Change Direction Campaign last week, which was a wonderful opportunity for high school students and middle school students as well. Advisory this month will be working on bullying awareness, and that will be the focus for October. Today, in the high school, we had interim reports go out. It's a snapshot of where students are halfway through the quarter. And we have a few events going on through the counseling office this month. We have a financial aid night and also gap year information night and presentation. That information is on the counseling website, if anyone's interested in more information. This week, on Friday, we are going to have our teacher workshop day in the high school, and we're going to be working on competencies and continuing that work. We're also going to be working on the NIASC accreditation process and some ALICE emergency training with faculty. And this evening, we have with us some high school students that are going to present to you their proposal for an overnight Model UN trip, or two trips, that they would like to be taking this fall, and I believe one is in February.
Hi, I'm Emily.
I'm Titi.
I'm Madeline.
I'm Kagan.
And we're the Oyster River Model UN Club. So we began our club two years ago when we were all freshmen. And since then, we have gone to seven conferences. Our first conference was about 10 people, and we have worked up to a conference that is two nights overnight in Boston. That was over 1,000 people. So we have really worked to make our club better and more competitive in all of the conferences we've gone to. And we really hope to try and expand our club to go to more conferences this year, including one at Princeton, and also going to our same one at Boston, which are both two-night overnights, or I think the Princeton one is three-night. So we'd just like to explain to you more about Model UN and our goals for this year.
So a little about Model UN. At each conference, a student is assigned a country and a topic, and their goal is to represent their country's viewpoints while creating a solution for that problem. And what I think is really great about Model UN is it teaches students public speaking skills, research skills, and also gives them a better viewpoint of what other countries are experiencing throughout the world.
Before Model UN, I would have never been able to speak in front of a whole group of people. But after this, I've developed my public speaking skills, and I'm able to use it in not just Model UN, but every other class I take.
So the two conferences, overnight conferences that we want to go to this year are the BU Model United Nations Conference and the Princeton University Model United Nations Conference. And we're going to take about five kids to Princeton, just to scout out if it's a good conference for us to attend, and whether we should take more kids next year.
And then in the past, like I said, we also went to the Boston Conference last year, and that was a huge success. I think we took probably 10 kids, and we hope to take way more of our team this year because now that we know that Boston is run really well, we hope to bring a lot more people to our conference. Oh, also, we just wanted to say that we really love Model UN, and we really want to be able to go to a lot more conferences, especially because you could say that we could go to a lot of conferences around here that are smaller with less people. But the importance of us going to larger conferences that are overnight conferences is because they have a lot more people from around the world. I've met people from completely different continents. I've met people from China, India, the Netherlands, basically all over the world at these Model UN conferences. And you also get, at the larger conferences, to have a lot more competition and be with a lot more people who know what they're doing and are really good at what they're doing. So it pushes you to be a better negotiator, a better speaker, and a better leader.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Denise, do you want?
I just need to make a comment that I actually participated in Model UN many, many years ago. And I still remember, I still remember to this day, we were Libya, believe me. Libya, this was a long time ago, it was about oil embargo and all that, but I still remember. And the hardest thing was to not be in my United States mind and to have to, you know, really look at it as if I really was representing Libya. So good luck to all of you. It's a great experience.
Thank you very much.
Kenny? Kenny?
So, while the students are here, I would like to move that we approve the two Oyster River High School field trips, the Model UN Conference to Princeton and the Model UN Conference in Boston.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Sarah. Are there further questions about these field trips? Maria?
Just about the applications, are they coming back before us? Because I just heard we're hoping to take many, many more students. I hate, sometimes I'm picky, hate to vote on things that I don't really know. The number of students attending is left behind, for instance. So...
The Princeton trip, there, there's a small group going.
Yeah.
That one's a small group, and the Boston trip, I don't know if they have exact...
Up to 15 kids, probably.
But I don't think they have exact numbers at this point, but I can provide those for you if you would like.
Yeah, sure.
So, do you want to put, we vote on those now and just get the information later? Would that be satisfactory?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion, I think we have a second, right? Other questions for, about the field trips? Hearing done, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those two field trips are approved. Thank you for coming and being such articulate spokesmen for what you're doing.
Good luck.
Good luck. Other announcements from the district?
Good evening, Kathryn Plohr, Director of Student Services. I have two things to share about tonight. One is in regards to our compliance visit at the high school last year. If you remember, I filled you in on the Department of Education to come in, and they were looking at our indicator 13, which is our transition, part of our, for secondary transition, part of the IEP process. And we got our final letter that we were at 100% compliance with that. The only way to be in compliance is to have 100%. So, if you're not 100%, you have to write a corrective action plan, so we were very motivated to make sure we were 100%. It was, it was all kudos to the high school staff, Misty Lowe, my assistant director, she led this initiative, and she deserves all the credit, she did a great job with it. The other thing that we just received today in the mail was our annual report card, if you will, on all of our indicators for special education. And again, we got a zero, which is the best, like, we want a zero, which means there's no errors in compliance. It looks at several different areas of compliance, including suspension and expulsions for students with IEPs, disproportionate representation of students with disabilities, initial evaluations, making sure we get evaluations done for students within the 45 days that are allowable, early transitions, kids coming up from preschool, making sure, coming into preschool, making sure that they have an IEP in place if they're eligible by age three. Secondary transitions, preschool outcomes, coordinating the early intervening services, so working with our agencies, our audit, our fiscal audit, the grant management, how we manage our IDEA grant, our federal funds, and our maintenance of effort, and our federal assurances to make sure that we're following all of that. And so, all of those scored a zero, which we got a zero, so it's great. So, kudos to our department. This is our big report card every year, and it's a lot of work to get, to get compliant in all those areas. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Kathryn, last one. The preschool stuff, is that the coordination with PEP? I mean, is that...
Yeah, so Lori Grant coordinates the program, but what happens is if a student is determined they might be eligible for special education, so we coordinate with the area agencies who are required to pick up children birth to age three, but if they are eligible, that IEP emplacement has to be in place by age three. So, if we get a referral two weeks before they're three, we have to get that done. So, that's the coordination that Lori does, and then we have to also show progress on those students, similar to how, I guess they're looking at progress with the smarter balance, but we have different outcome measures that we look at, and our students are making the expected growth. Yeah.
I just want to just give a shout-out to PEP.
Yeah, they are rock stars.
Those educators are phenomenal.
Yeah, they're great. They're great. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Carrie Vash from Mastway. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that we've been, we completed and that we are moving forward with. One is, I had mentioned, our first all-school field trip to Bedrock Gardens on the 16th of September. It went amazingly. It was just amazing. It was a whole day, the younger kids went in the morning, the older kids went in the afternoon, and as classrooms traveled between four different teacher stations, some kids saw four stations on the side, some kids saw four stations on the side, but they were just amazing. Our whole school was over there for lunch, and it was pretty neat to look out over this amazing field, if you haven't been to Bedrock Gardens, which I'm sure most of you have. It was just spectacular, to see the children interacting with one another, encouraging one another to be supportive. We even had some students that need a lot of supports, that really voiced some of their first words ever in our school environment, which was pretty amazing during that time. So, I would like to put out a big thank you to all of our parent volunteers, chaperones, and our enrichment committee that put this together in record time. It's always nerve-wracking doing a field trip at the beginning of the school year, but it went off without a hitch, so we're already brainstorming ways that we can do other all-school field trips in the future. We had two curriculum nights this fall already, one for kindergarten and first grade, and one for second, third, and fourth grade. So, I really want to send my appreciation to all of the parents. I know everyone is so busy in the fall, but those folks that were able to come out, or those folks that were not able to come out, but communicated with the teachers to say, you know, "I'm sorry, we have an overlapping event going on, but could you please send home some information about what you're doing this year," and then following up. It was, it was wonderful to see so many folks invested in their education and really partnering. As Suzanne said, this Friday, we will not have school for Professional Development Day. At the elementary level, we'll be using it for parent-teacher conferences. Again, we have such a high attendance, it's, it's great to see parents able to come on in and hear from teachers' perspectives on how kids are progressing and what they, what teachers have learned about students' development thus far. Next week, we have our first PTO meeting. I would like to encourage anyone and everyone to attend if you can. It will be held in the North Commons at 9:30 on Thursday, the 13th. And the PTO is getting ready for their first Halloween social, which is on Saturday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It takes place throughout the whole school, there's a lot of activities and crafts and engaging things for students to take part in, so more information will follow about that, but we're well on the way to a great year into the fall. Thank you.
Dennis Harrington-Mohermit. Couple of things. First of all, we are beginning to feel the relief that will come when the population of Mohermit is reduced to what it should be, and it really feels good. So, I wanted to thank you for your efforts, even though for a while, it looked like it would never happen. We had a little over 400 kids last year, it's 373, and looking at what is happening next year, we're going to be even better off then. Maybe even, within a few years, that modulo will disappear.
Don't hold your breath.
Were you thinking of retiring in one of those...
Yeah, you retired before the modulars did, you know.
It may be all I can afford. Secondly, I'd like to invite you all to our annual pumpkin stroll, which celebrates curriculum, community planting, and harvesting from 5:00 to 8:00 on the 20th of October, and it's the day after a full moon, so if we're lucky, it'll be absolutely gorgeous. Everything happens outside, and there'll be a bonfire. Don't worry, I'm not supervising the bonfire, it's the fire department, with roughly 373 pumpkins in a circle, and there'll be a storyteller, music, and it all happens outside.
Thank you, Dennis. Other announcements from the district? Announcements, commendations, comments from the board? Denise?
I have a couple. First of all, the Change Direction was wonderful presentation, and kudos to those who put all of that together. And the, and the community dinner was wonderful as well, so it was a great evening. I have something really interesting. I have a friend who has family in Germany, and she received an email from her nephew, and I, oops, if I can get my phone up and going. I have to read this because it actually is about Oyster River. Okay, I will get it right there. Okay, so it says, I'll just read what it says. "I just got a message," and he said he is starting to read a new book. He sent me a picture of the first page of the first chapter, here is the translation. "My first endurance event was run over two laps around the sports field of the Oyster River Elementary School in Durham, New Hampshire. It was one of many events that were at the Field Day Program, a kind of graduation ceremony for the fifth graders." So, this was at the intro of a book that her nephew is reading in Germany. So, I thought that was pretty cool. Yeah, that Field Day in fifth grade, you never know what it's gonna take you.
Others? Kenny?
I have two things. I think it was about a year ago, I complimented Jay Richard and all of his staff for the multiple after-school opportunities, the clubs, and it just came to my attention, and Sunny is very involved with it, there's an outing club that takes kids up into the White Mountains, backpacking overnight, an amazing experience for those kids, so I really thank that staff. And the other thing, we talked a lot about the mental health issues in school, we deal with the, kind of the problems with drug, alcohol, and whatnot, there was the program that Denise alluded to. And there was an article that I read, and I just wanted to share it all, so Alex was kind enough to print off copies and pass these around, and then there'll be, I think, some more extra. But as we talk about mental health, and I want, this, this talks about a program of identifying kids at risk and, and in schools. And just, just to read a little bit of it, "Recognizing that 80 to 90 percent of teenagers who try alcohol, cocaine, opioids, or methamphetamine do not become addicted, they focus on what's different about the minority who do." This is a program. "The traits that puts kids at the highest risk for addiction aren't all what you might expect." And this is the author, "In my case, I seemed an unlikely candidate for addiction. I excelled academically, behaved well in class, and participated in numerous extracurricular activities. Inside, though, I was suffering from loneliness, anxiety, and sensory overload. The same traits that made me gifted in academics left me clueless with people." And then this part speaks to me about how we should be really structuring programs. "That's why when my health teacher said that peer pressure could push you to take drugs, what I heard instead was, drugs will make you cool." And I think it shows the sophistication that we really need as we're developing better and better ways to relate with our students, to help our students, to deal with those socio, socio, social issues and the problems of drug addiction, alcohol, and self-esteem. So, I just thought everyone might want to read that if they have time.
Thank you. Thank you. Alice? Sarah?
I just want to piggyback on Carrie's, thanks to the staff for the curriculum nights and the parent nights. I was able to attend both at the middle school and one of the elementary schools, and, you know, it, they're just such a great reminder, not only of the, the quality staff that we have here, but also the quality curriculum. And I think it was exciting to hear about the different things that, that our kids are learning, and just to be able to sit in a room and, and listen to our teachers talk about their crafts. So, thank you, because I know they take time, and I know they're nerve-wracking.
Dan, did you say?
Just want to reiterate what Denise said about the Change Direction event the other night at the high school. I thought it was excellent. I just, I feel like I left there feeling like it was a really worthwhile campaign, and I hope we continue to keep it on the front burner and do everything we can to support it. I just want to mention an event coming up on October 15th, that's Saturday, Powder Major Day. I know a number of us have mentioned the Forest Society's efforts to conserve a large parcel of land, primarily in Madbury, but also in Durham and Lee. There is a day from 9:00 to 3:00, like I said, on the 15th, encourage members of the public to come. There'll be guided hikes, information about the property. I think it's relevant to us, not only because it would potentially be a community resource, it would provide our schools with an excellent resource for learning, for outings, cross-country clubs, that sort of thing. The other thing frankly is, you know, being the Madbury rep on our school board, if, if that parcel of land were developed, between 70 and 80 new homes could potentially be built, and a lot of people like me and my family could potentially move into Madbury. And I know we talked extensively last year while we were building our budget about the, the impact of our school district's budget on local taxpayers. So, if this land were developed and not conserved, as we hope, it could have a pretty, unfortunately detrimental impact on our local tax rates. So, a number of reasons to support the project. I encourage people to get out and enjoy Powder Major Day. The event will be held at Tibbetts Field in Madbury. For those who may not have soccer players in their families, I would recommend carpooling, because those of us who do have soccer players know that Tibbetts Field does not have an abundance of parking, so, and there will be soccer going on that day, so just a little tip. Thanks.
Thanks. Alice?
You know, this isn't the first time this has gone out, but the middle school jazz band, it was really cool on Homecoming. Dave Irvin had the kids out there, and it was hilarious, because they're really not a marching band, but they just kind of went for it, and he built a little float to put, like, drums on, they had kids with guitars, and had speakers, and it, and they started doing the fight song for UNH, and the marching band was there, the UNH marching band, you could see they were like, kind of, wow, that's kind of cool, they, they joined in with them, and it was just a really cool experience, and it typifies the wackiness that is that jazz band that gives kids such great experiences.
Maria?
Just a comment on Dean's favorite subject, because we're going to have the Late Start Forum, and I guess I'm a little concerned about the language, if we keep talking about late start. I have searched the web, done some research, and there is really three, what we're really talking about is sleep deprivation, and there are other things than start time that affects sleep deprivation. And I'm afraid that if we get a decision on the late start, we'll skip the other ones. One, from my research, is caffeine, and it's my understanding that that's being sold and provided in our schools. Why, I don't know, but that's a sleep influencing. The other one is what I've been reading, blue light, which is what the light that comes off the computer, is television and what have you, and I assume that homework load affects the amount of blue light that our kids are getting, or maybe it's just games. But I want to make sure that we don't drop those two pegs, legs on the stool, so to speak, by saying, okay, now we have got Buzzroot that we all like, our starting time that Dean likes, that we also talk, why do we have caffeine in the school? How much homework are we giving kids to do after, after the after-school activities, which of course will then influence? And then just looking at the priorities for the commissioner... And then just looking at the priorities for the commissioner handed us. It doesn't address my concerns about civility, lack of ethics, or history. And I think, you know, I'm getting to the age where I'm thinking, what kind of world am I leaving my grandchildren here? It's not that pretty. And I think these are really important. So that's my ranting. It's because I've had surgery on my shoulder, and I can't do anything, I have a lot of time. So, there you go.
Just piggybacking off that point about homework load and caffeine, I think caffeine is a byproduct of not sleeping because of homework. I don't think it's the caffeine that's necessarily causing us to not sleep. I think it's the fact that everyone, like, a good portion of the school, like, pretty much everyone you talk to is involved in extracurriculars, and then everyone has the workload after that. And I think we are not not going to sleep because we're drinking the caffeine, or I get the caffeine is definitely a negative impact on that, but I think that that is a byproduct of the problem, which is, I guess, is kind of across the nation, but especially here at Oyster River, when so many kids are driven to do so many things, that I think that that is what we should maybe focus on. I don't know, so. Just my two cents on it.
Thanks. Other board comments? Okay, is there Assistant Superintendent's report?
Can I go after Jim, because I'm going to talk about a few things you can introduce?
Sure.
Just want to reverse, that helps.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to bring a couple of things to the board's attention. We did do two middle school presentations, and the one at the high school, the message was received well, but the vehicle for delivering the message was not. And so we listened to parent concerns, and we adjusted our presentation for the middle school. The concern from the parents was basically that they felt like, well, some parents felt like they were being held hostage in that presentation, and that was never our intent, of course. And so listening to that, particularly one parent who gave very constructive feedback, said, you know, basically, Jim, I support this issue, I just didn't support how it was delivered. So we took that to heart, and we changed the presentation format at the middle school. So rather than having all the parents come to us, we had parents who are interested in the topic come to us. And we had two sessions. The first session was probably about fifty people, and the second session was about fifteen people. Great commentary, you know, picking up on Maria's theme of, well, let's ask them what's important to them. So we just presented the condition of the building, and at the end, we asked them, you know, what was important to you regarding this presentation? And Todd took notes, so Todd, if you'd like to share that, some of those with the board, that would be great.
Yeah, overall, the feedback, we had about five or 10 minutes after each presentation to take feedback, but overall, I think that the feedback was positive. Things that were specifically highlighted, desire to have, make technology a high priority so that we make sure the building is wired and has all of the technology needed. Lot of comments related to the draftiness in the building, wanting to make sure that we have a facility that, you know, the temperature is sensitive, and it's warm when it's supposed to be warm, and cooler when it's supposed to be cooler. Talked, a lot of conversation about traffic flow, literally traffic flow in the parking lots, wanting to make sure we take that into account. Conversation about the size of classrooms was raised. A number of people wanted to know, you know, why do we need classrooms of 900 feet or larger? And then making sure our facilities were ADA compliant. I think the video that we showed with Mr. Sullivan leading the charge around the building kind of really dramatized the challenges of not just moving a computer cart, but getting around the building if you're a handicapped person. And there were also a number of questions that were raised. I mean, some of the more basic ones, what would this cost? And I think it's hard to say what something would cost until you actually decide on a design, but that was raised. Concern about what would happen to the students during the construction phase, so what would you do with the students while you're doing this project? And again, that would depend on the project. There was some issues related to wanting to make sure if we build a building, that we take into account flexible, flexible design, so that if the numbers went up, we could adjust to it, but it also wouldn't be overlarge, so we would have a lot of wasted space, which unfortunately has happened in some schools where they've gone ahead and built too big. And then, again, just questions about the physical structure and what that might entail. So there were, for the most part, like I say, generally very positive comments. I think really what people want to hear is for us to begin to put some ideas out there so they can react to those, and then obviously at that point, we can cost it out.
Great, thank you, Todd. So following that train of thought, over the long weekend, over this past long weekend, I went to a workshop in Texas and reconnected with the company that Kenny and Maria and I did a webinar with about a year and a half ago. Remembered why I felt they were so impressive. And part of the reason I feel they're so impressive is, it goes along with this theme of us not telling the community what they want, but having the community tell us what they think is important. And their product reaches out to all of the community, not just the school community. And with the middle school project, clearly this is a bigger reach out than just reaching out to our own staff and students, because clearly we have a vested interest. So their process engages the entire community of households within our district. And I thought what I would do is ask them to put together a proposal, and with your permission at some point, invite them into the district, which would have a nominal cost to it, just to do a presentation to the school board, so you can see what inspired Maria and Kenny and I in that webinar. I think it's a product that is timely and worth considering, and you may recall that when I reached out the first time, I was shocked by the cost. So there is a cost associated with this. But then I was saying that to Kenny earlier, and he said, well, what's the cost of a failed, you know, vote? So it might be, you know, a wise investment. So rather than I make a decision on a contractor, I'd like to do that with you as partners. So having them come in, do the presentation to the board, get a sense of whether you think the value is there, that I think is there, and then we can move together on that or not, depending on the board's feel around that. It's a unique approach. It's not been tried in New Hampshire. They have no customers in New Hampshire. Their closest customer is Massachusetts, but they have customers throughout the United States and Canada.
I just have one thing. There's, you know, perhaps when you do that presentation, maybe there's a way to share the cost, because, I mean, just south of us is Newmarket, and they're trying to put a bond together for a school, so maybe, maybe there's an opportunity for other districts also to join in with us if we do a presentation like that.
I can certainly ask. I'll check with Meredith if she's interested. I also wanted to commend Heather McNoff for the work on Change Direction. Todd and I kind of said, this is just critical work for our district. She picked up the ball, and she made that happen through numerous emails and clarifications. And at one point, we were concerned that Barbara wasn't going to make it in time, and, you know, the judge came in and covered beautifully. Really, I was unable to attend, and so Todd took the lead on that along with Heather, but Heather is the person who deserves Yeoman's credit. She did a fantastic job, and I just want to make sure the world knows that. And then tomorrow, she'll say, please don't use my name. That's what she does all the time. So the counselor who shall not be named deserves many, many kudos. And then I'd just like to thank the Foster's newspaper for the coverage that we've seen this fall. We're being covered again tonight. This is the most coverage we've seen in a number of years. And also commend Loren Remsdahl for all of her work. You know, between coverage from the paper and coverage we've done for ourselves and submitted to the paper, we've had eight articles in the month of September, and I think we're doing a really great job informing the community of our work. It's tough for a newspaper that's situated in a large town to give us the attention that we think we deserve, but I have to say that they've resurrected that coverage, and I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Can I just add, because there was a, you know, since it's been mentioned now a couple of times about that Change of Direction, there was that, I mean, it was a smaller crowd that was there, and I know you videotaped it, and I would strongly recommend that people watch that, mainly because during the presentation, where they talked about like the stigma of mental illness, lo and behold, there's a community member that's going through a very difficult situation with their son, that exactly illustrates the point of Change of Direction. And I think that it would be well worth people's time to watch it.
It's a very moving moment.
It really was.
And that's my report tonight, Todd.
Thank you.
So I think that--
Was enrollment, was that part of it?
I just wanted to say one, just a couple of quick things about Change Direction, just because it will be, it was videotaped, and it will be on, and Alexandra, I'm sure you're working on it, right? Yeah. It will be being broadcast for everybody to see. It was a great moment. I do want to just talk a little bit about what Change Direction is all about. Really, what the, Change Direction really is, a national campaign that, we were fortunate enough, New Hampshire was the first state in the country to launch this effort. It's, it is a national campaign. First Lady Michelle Obama's endorsed it, you know, Prince Harry has endorsed it. There's all kinds of people all over the world who have endorsed this effort. It started, it's a national effort, started in New Hampshire, and Oyster River School District was the first school district in the country to be on board with joining in this effort, a part of Change Direction. What it is, isn't it, is a campaign. What the beauty of it is the simplicity of its message. It's not trying to understand all the underlying causes of mental health or mental illness. It's simply talking about what is the signs that someone might be experiencing mental illness. So you will be seeing signs like this, the five signs of mental illness all over the school district. You'll probably start to see, I don't know if any of you people are Twitter people or not, but they're going to start to be seeing Twitter tweets, I guess you call them, people holding up their hands, and this is like the symbol, you'll see lots of celebrities doing this as well, the five signs. Five signs of mental illness are not feeling like yourself, potentially feeling agitated, feeling withdrawn, caring for yourself, or personal care diminishing, or a sense of hopelessness. And the idea is to raise the bar on mental illness, much the same way we raise the bar on recognizing when someone's having cardiac distress. You know the signs of a heart attack, and you tend to immediately say, I need to do something about that. And the idea is to try to cause that level of consciousness, so people, not just counselors, because I think that's, you know, that's the easy solution. It's getting everybody to be aware and to be concerned. And I think, as Al pointed out, there was a moment in the presentation where it really came home, that having this very simple conversation really motivated people to say and do things. All reports are from discussions that occurred at the high school and advisories, and at the middle school following this presentation. There was a lot of interesting productive dialogue around it, and I think you'll find that our student community is very receptive to it. And just one last thing, a lot of people, and I've heard some, I guess you could say, criticism that some of the things that we're doing now with relating to mental health, that they're more showy, but they're not necessarily leading to a direction. And I want to be clear that this is not the end of the road. There's lots more coming. In fact, at the end of this month, we have a connect training taking place for 35 staff. Connect training is a suicide prevention program through NAMM New Hampshire. We're getting 35 of our staff trained, and then there are going to be 10 that are going to do three days' worth of training, which will become a train-the-trainer type model, so we can really raise the bar on our ability to respond to those sort of crises. And obviously, that combined with the work that's already been done with Dr. Macy, where we're beginning to look at our crisis response plans. I just think it's important that we kind of put this all in the big perspective. And then just one last thing, to bring it back to the presentation on September 28th for Change Direction. One of the cool things, I was talking to Barbara Van Allen, who was the, she's a world-renowned psychologist. She was named Time Magazine's one of the 100 most influential people in the world, so she's pretty, pretty significant. She told me that, well, the reason she was late arriving at Oyster River, because she was meeting with Tom Hanks the day before, and she was going back to DC, and she had to rush back because she was meeting with the Newman's Own Foundation. So my thing was, wow, Oyster River, being put between Tom Hanks and Paul Newman, when have you ever got to use that in the same sentence?
Thank you, Todd. And then just quickly on the enrollment, because I gave you a fairly lengthy report at the last meeting, we were within five students of the projection that I gave you last, at the last meeting. Masway is indeed at 320 students. This is a school that's not been above 300 since I've been here, so Carrie's got the right sign out front evidently. Moharamit was within two students of the projection. The middle school was dead on, and the high school is off only by three students. So 2,115 students, when we count the PEP program, it's 2,144 students. I sent Denise today a, what I call the down-and-dirty enrollment report that we get from NASDAQ every year, and I sent that off to Allison as well, so that the Long Range Planning Committee, should be in your box if it's not, it's coming. I asked her to send it to you today. And what it shows, and I don't know that the Long Range Planning Committee will show this, but, so we'll wait for their report, but believe it or not, it shows it's above 2,000 for the next 10 years. So something dramatically changed in the district as we've moved forward together. It's probably Kenny's smile, but. I couldn't resist, Kenny, you were smiling. All right, so that's truly it.
I wonder if we could have the Student Senate report now, then go to the Business Administrator's report, because I think that fits into the budget goal, seeming a little more logical. So Troy?
All right. So we had our annual Spirit Week on last week, and we had our Field Day events, and it went fantastic. As many staff members have reached out to the Senate to say, it was one of the best, if not the best, Spirit Weeks we've had in a long time. And I think a lot of that, being that the Student Senate is the main planning behind that, I think that can attest to how engaged our Student Senate is in our community, in our school community. And it was a lot of work, and I think, as most of the Senate can attest, it was exhausting. But now that it's over, we are looking into more things that the Student Senate can do to better our student community, and that includes some fundraising events. And right now, we're trying, it's a little bit of a drop-off, because for the last, you know, several weeks, it's just been almost every day that we've been working on Spirit Week. But it's over, and it was great, very successful, so I think that that really attests to our student government, or Student Senate.
One question I mentioned, Troy, before the meeting, is, I'm wondering whether, with the start time issue, whether that's something where somebody from the board could come and explain what these plans are, and there could be some feedback from the Senate, since you're the representatives of the high school. So I don't, I mean, I would just offer that to you.
I absolutely think that that's a good idea. I think that now that we're less busy, I think that that would be a great group of students to go to, because we're active in what we do, and we care greatly about the school environment, and it's a great cross-section, I think, of a lot of different types of students. So I think just getting student input, as well as community input, but mostly student input, should be a main priority in putting forward a late start plan, and I think that that would be a great start into getting a better forum for the school community. So I think that maybe having a board member come would be great.
Maria?
Could be a sleep deprivation.
Well, I could get into that.
Student Senate meetings are at seven in the morning, so.
There you go.
In that case, it's off. Yeah, Denise?
Do we need to do like a kind of a vote to support that, or just, does the board need to, you know, just to?
Well, what do people think about that? Is that a good thing to do?
I don't know if we need to or not, or can we just say, that sounds like a great idea, and?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I definitely think it's a great idea.
Okay. Okay, so either, I mean, as a chair, I'd be willing to go.
Okay.
Maybe if Dr. Morse could get up. He could get up, yeah.
I can talk to the Senate advisor, but generally, we meet every Wednesday morning around seven.
Okay.
So I can definitely talk to the Senate advisor and get back to the SAU building with details.
Okay.
Okay, great.
I just think, I just think we've kind of, it'd be good to get them into the discussion.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
One more comment, Tom.
Yeah.
And also, certainly, I would say, students who are interested are certainly invited to come to the work, you know, the workshop night that we're having, and certainly give our input that way as well, although I recognize a lot of students, as you say, are busy, but anyone, you know, as far as-- But anyone, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, anyone in our community who would like to come to that and give feedback, we want to hear it.
I could also try to get it more publicized on maybe announcements. I could talk to, because one of the people in the Senate does the announcements at our school, so I could get him to maybe have an announcement. So if that's something the board would be interested in, I can definitely try to make that happen.
And maybe have the meeting with the board first, with the Senate first, and then you can figure out if you can get that.
Absolutely.
Good.
It's coming up next week, though.
Oh, you're talking about the announcement?
Forum.
Okay. Oh, to announce the forum, I'm sorry. Yeah. I think, yeah, we should get that out.
We can use the intercom system as well at the high school.
Okay, okay. Good. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I used the wrong word. I meant the forum.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Troy? Sue?
Good evening. You asked me about budget predictions for next year, 2018, 1718. So I did a memo and came up with some figures for you. You know, you've all read the memo, but basically retirement, we know we have an increase in retirement, guild contract, we have a number for that, track and field bond, that's the difference. We have $22,000 in the budget, so that's the difference that we'll need to add to the budget. And then we put in 10% for health. Health insurance rates, they meet on October 18th, so I hope on October 19th, I'll have a number for you, the GMR. Hopefully, it's under 10. But that gives you an idea of what each percentage means for an increase in health. So without any other additions, we're at 1.4 million increase.
Which would be what percentage of the budget?
Oh, I didn't figure that.
You know, I have a close, because I did your like 3.25%. Is $1,461,368. So it's like 3.2 something, you know?
3.2.
Somebody like lean back there and probably do a nice math or something.
So, and there'd be other items, I think, that are not on here that are almost inevitably going to be requests.
Keep in mind that the initiative and the strategic plan for facilities was to add 200,000 each year. We did not do that last year. And that does not include that. And then we cut back on a bus last year. So that would be another 80,000 if we went back to our three-a-year model. So that's not included in that.
And we'd also have the increase in the administrator's salary, right?
Yes.
Which, do you have a sense of that?
I'll have a better sense after we go through the first round. One of the things that helps soften that with the other groups is we had 27 pays last year, so we have a little extra in there. So that gives us a little bit of leverage. But no, I don't really. We tried to figure that, but it's difficult to get our hands around it right now, because we're still hiring, we're still hiring a few people. We hadn't, all of our staff hasn't been, hadn't been filled when we rolled the budget, so we have to adjust all of those. So we're in the process of doing that now.
It'll be an addition.
It'll be an addition. There will be an addition for that, yes, definitely.
Okay. And there, I think, Dr. Morse, you anticipate some pretty needed staffing additions. Is that, is it too early to think about that, or?
No, we're actually thinking about it, you know, administratively. I had my first meeting with Suzanne and Jay today. And there are going to be some needed personnel requests. And so I meet with the elementary tomorrow and Catherine there, soon thereafter. So we're going through the initial administrative conversation. But, you know, based on the numbers, and if we just use raw numbers here, and you're going to be looking at a high school of at least 790 students next year. So that's going to be an increase. And of course, any increase in students, also, you need to recognize, you know, costs that go along with that, like supply costs, textbook costs, so forth. We just started the conversation around staffing. And so by the time where we get to the workshop with you all, we'll have all of these answers in detail and then we can start deciding our priorities from there. But we're at the very, very beginning stages administratively.
Okay. Denise?
Just in terms of the conversation, and the second page does mention the additional 350,000 in tuition.
Sure.
And, you know, in terms of this overall conversation, I feel like, looking back at last year, that when we set our overall goal of 3%, that was, if I'm correct, the best that I can see from the notes from last year is that included the revenue, you know, revenue side of things as well. So that, you know, so we were just looking at the increase in expenditures. We were looking at it adjusted based on the increase in revenue, specifically from the tuition.
That's right. When we get further into this, we start talking about what revenue is available to offset increases.
Right.
And that's not a part of Sue's memo, other than we wanted the board to know that, you know, up to this point, we've largely used the Barrington Tuition Funds to offset taxes to the tune of about $1.6 million this year. We anticipate, you know, 350,000 new tuition dollars in the next budget. And based on the outline in Sue's memo about these costs that would increase regardless, what I'm suggesting is that we may end up making decisions around the increased Barrington tuition to help offset these costs of the towns.
Just as a follow-up, so in my thinking, as we're thinking about how to set up the goal, I mean, I feel like rather than just say, you know, whatever, 3.5% or whatever it needs to be in terms of the expenditure side, that we should, that we should include that. I mean, I just feel like we should include it in terms of our goal. That's all.
Okay. So, you know, it always drove me crazy, just to start off with the percentage thing, that we'd come up with this percentage out of like thin air and really have no idea what we're doing. And I think this time, really, we have the opportunity for it to be more of a meaningful discussion. And I think the first part is that we were smart to get the contract done early and that you have these expenses here. And I sent Sue an email, kind of asking her like, what was our total last year? And what is 3%? What was it? And I had it forwarded, I think, to everybody. And the reason I did that is like, because you can compare the two, is, is it realistic to say, can we do 3% as a goal, looking at what, I mean, we have to do, unless we don't accept, we already did accept the contract, you know, unless the voters don't. These are like non-negotiable things that we have to do. So I think it really gives us the starting point to come up with a realistic number that means something. And I completely agree with Denise about the revenue. And I was just talking to Sue, I wanted to change it and just say, expenses minus revenue is no, and unfortunately, it just doesn't work out that well.
Can't combine the two.
Saying it, the budget's just too complex. But I agree that, that we're going to have to use the additional revenue of Barrington and potentially revenue that we set aside in our budget, or the-
Trust fund.
Trust fund for benefit stabilization, because otherwise, we're going to end up with this budget having to make some rather draconian cuts as we have a increase in students. So I want to try to balance, like, to have a realistic budget goal that makes us prioritize things. So we're not just saying, well, we, we're going to do all these things this year, that there is a downward pressure, that we really have to prioritize what we can do this year, that, so it's fiscally responsible, but achievable.
Kenny?
This, I didn't know how to ask this question, and maybe it shows my lack of understanding. But when we're talking about number and an increase by percent, are we using what we totally budgeted for last year? Or are we using what we really expended last year? Because there's a big difference.
We're using what we budgeted. We're not using what we expended prior year. We're using what we budgeted.
So in a way, when we looked at last year's budget, for whatever reason, we came in very under budget at the end.
Not very under budget. We came in under budget. But remember, our goal is to come in under budget by about $650,000 on purpose, so we don't have a dramatic impact on the local tax rates. And so the difference between that and what we came in with was probably 300, 350.
You mean in total?
Yeah.
Well, ideally, we came in more, but remember, we utilized some of that to fund the lights. So it was more than the 650. 650 plus 358. Well, actually, you put 200 in the fund, too. So it was, yeah, so it was more than that.
So, but if we'd use that number, then we might not have that six.
Right.
That, that-
If oil is $50 and spikes to set, whatever.
Yeah, I always get nervous when you do that.
Unbalanced to give back to the-
And remember, we came up with that because of staffing, staff savings and so forth. So.
And I understand, Denise, you can't put yourself against the wall. And we do. But I think it's part of our discussion is we need to keep that history, too.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Other questions? Then we can get down to the wording of the goal.
Here we go.
You have a sample.
Then just fix it and let us know when you've got it.
This is the part that-
We're going to vote on the number?
No, we're going to start looking at the goal and get a sense of whether the goal's anywhere close to what the board is comfortable with. I don't think you're going to vote on the goal tonight, I wouldn't imagine. I think you're just trying to understand it. I think.
So up to the group, yeah. Denise?
Well, so getting back to my point. So right now, it says, the overall impact, the general budget goal will not have an overall impact that exceeds 3.25%. However, the budget goal does not factor in new revenue from the Barrington Tuition Agreement. So I guess my point is, if we're thinking that we want to use that new revenue from Barrington, what, if we put that in there, how much would it lower? The, you know, am I saying this right?
Yeah. You're asking the right question, but we can't get there until we have a draft budget for you and you can look at it in total and see the revenue, as well as the expenditures, and then fine-tune. The budget goal has always kind of been a broader goal that gets us to the place where, you know, Sue and I can hold ourselves accountable to the draft. And then when we present the draft, you guys look at the budget goal and say, you know, this is close to what we wanted the budget goal to be. So the budget goal is really guidance for administration to move forward. So, you know, the percentage, what I was, what I was attempting to do in that percentage was simply say, you know, that we would try to control the overall impact. The overall impact to me is, as a cooperative school district, not individual towns. Because we know, for example, for two years in a row, the impact of our budget, which we've held to 3% in the past, was over 4% for Medbury. And so that is something we can't control. And the reason we can't control it is it's based on property value, which we have no control over, and the number of students, which we have no control over. And so what happened to Medbury in the last two years is, you might recall, it started out with a depreciation in their overall value and an increase in students, which was the perfect storm in terms of its impact on one town. What I anticipate this year is that all of the property that Durham has developed over the last two years comes onto the tax rolls this year. So it should draw, should drive up the overall value of Durham. If Durham's overall value goes up in relation to Medbury and Lee, it should have a deflating impact on the two smaller towns. And I say all of that with very tenuous language, because we won't know until we actually do know. But that's the theory. And so when I was looking at the 3.25, I was thinking, you know, can we keep the impact? And by keeping the impact there, I was thinking, the way we would do that is use the new Barrington tuition. We still have quite a sizable amount of tuition going to tax, the tax effort. But also, Al reminded me in this conversation we just started, was we have deliberately set aside funds that would help us in a year where we're getting a nearly $300 shift from the state to the local related to retirement, for example. You know, Sue alluded to the fact that we didn't fund our capital plan last year for the first time, and our work together, and we need to get back on track. Well, maybe this is the time we go to the trust fund and say, you know, rather than put that $200,000 on the backs of the taxpayer, the taxpayers have already done that for us. You have the authority to use that money to try to offset that cost. That's what I was thinking. So, you know, as Al, Al looked at it and he was looking at it from the same issue, but he was looking at it from a completely different direction, getting there. So it's really, you know, the verbiage you give here really is a big help to Sue and I as we're trying to put this budget together from the various divisions in the district. So, you know, that's where that number came from.
Just had a comment. To me, the operative sentence is, the budget goal will not have an overall impact that exceeds 3.25. And as you describe it, impact means anticipated expenditure increases minus the offsets from funds that we might tap or from the Barrington tuition. So that's the impact.
That's exactly what I was shooting for.
I think that the paragraph beyond that, I think, clouds the issue a little bit. I'm not sure we need it, because it says, the budget goal does not factor in new revenue. And I think, well, it kind of does, you know?
Okay.
And so, I mean, I almost think that if we just kept, if that's the goal, that we're going to start out with, that's the goal, you know?
Can I, I had one change, you know, because we always love to wordsmith at this table.
But it's not your turn yet. Kenny hasn't changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I.
I said, what I would change on that is that, instead of saying however, it doesn't factor in, say that, that new revenue, just cut the first part out and say, new revenue from the Barrington Tuition Agreement and the Benefits Stabilization Fund can be used to offset staffing, healthcare, and retirement costs due to increased student enrollment. Therefore, it clarifies that you could use that money if you need to meet your budget goal, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That kind of explains how you, by how you might get there. And I'm wondering whether, because we have the budgets, the health stabilization, I forget the names exactly. We also have a facilities fund we put money into, and whether you tap one, the other, you know, how that combination is.
Yeah.
But I think that, it seems to me that given, like, you're at three, you know, just at these numbers here, you're at 3.2. And then you have increases to administrators, you have facilities, you have a bus, and you're going to have, you know, I think you're going to have probably social studies, but, you know, the pressure, you know, on the high school and some positions would be almost unavoidable. So I really think you're going to need to get that extra money to offset.
Yeah. Okay. So what I said is that, the new revenue from the Barrington Tuition Agreement and the Benefits Stabilization Fund can be used to offset staffing, healthcare, retirement costs due to increase in student enrollment.
Thank you.
Yeah, what I was trying to do, exactly what Al's doing, I was just trying to be transparent that in this budget year, we would have to turn to new revenue to try to offset our overall impact. So, yeah.
I'm wondering whether you need to do to increase in student enrollment, because the retirement costs aren't, you know?
Yeah, you can cut that off.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's-
It's not due, right.
Yeah. Some of it's due.
Okay. So as we continue to talk, what I would do is the same thing that I do in any other conversation we have, is I'll take the board's input, rejigger the language, bring it back for you to look and see if it reflects the conversation this evening, and try to make sure it's closer to where the seven of you are comfortable.
I just had a comment. I'm always surprised that the language that we use to say, the money we've budgeted to give back to the taxpayers, that's not what it's budgeted for. Because if it is, I'd rather have my money in my savings account. We budgeted extra money in case something horrible happens. And if it happens to not be used, then we put, but we always say, oh, what's the number that we're going to give back to the taxpayers?
Well, I think that, and I'm not a, I don't know the accounting rule, but we end up spending about 98.5% of the money here. And so that's, and you don't want to, you know, it seems like a big amount, it is 600, it's a big amount of money, but whether you want to go to 99%, you know, you want to have that kind of cushion.
You do.
So.
But it's not budgeted to give back to the taxpayers. It's budgeted in case we have to go to the 99.
Exactly.
So I wish we'd stop saying that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I agree with Maria because I think, you know, then it creates the expectation that that, and as you say, it would be ni- it's nice and, and usually does, but I completely agree with Maria in this, in this situation. That's really what that money is for.
So do you have enough to go?
I do.
I guess my question for you is, you're having, you're having to start budgeting, you're, you're starting now.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, we're behind, I was checking the date that we did this last year, and we're, we're a month behind where we were last year.
Yeah, that's because we moved the whole process forward a month. Everything was moved forward a month.
Does this give you guidance, because you're starting to do the budget anyways, does this give you guidance, you know, without a vote on this tonight, does this give you guidance on what to do?
It absolutely does, yeah.
So if we vote on it next meeting, that's workable.
That's very.
And my only thing is, are people okay conceptually with that and whatever, three point two five percent? Because they're going to start budget, I just, if it's way off the mark, then I think we should, somebody should say something.
Denise?
I just want to make sure that I am understanding this and putting it all the pieces together, is that we're saying that, that the increases here are already about that. It's three point two approximately.
Yep.
And so basically, what, what you are talking about is any increase beyond that is really coming from these other things that we've just talked about. So, yeah, I get that.
Which the board has complete control over in the end, in the terms of what they approve and what they don't approve.
Right, yep.
Just, in kind of the preamble that you put together, we're, talked about the four things that we're coming up with, close to the million five. It says that that doesn't include additional efforts to address our capital needs. Our goal for our strategic plan for facilities has been continued to provide money to that till it reaches three percent. So, and then in the first part of our goal here that we're not approving tonight, we're talking about, it talks about our district's strategic plan. So is, should we have an affirmation that we still follow that notion that we want to keep building up our CIP?
And I don't think so, Kenny, because it is part of your strategic plan and you have approved it. But like last year, you know, the constraints were so overwhelming, the board had to say, we need to stop this year from funding that in order to make, you know, a rational budget proposal to the, to the public. So I think it's the opposite. I think when you get yourself collectively into a place where you think, oh, I'm uncomfortable, then you make a decision based on that to say, this isn't the year we can do it. Everybody understood, you know, the rationale, nobody was, nobody didn't understand it. And it, you know, quite frankly, was the right decision for last year. And each year, you look at those, that strategic planning and say, this is where we want to be, is this where we're going to be?
So, and, and I strongly support it because I think if we don't fund it now, we'll be in a bad place. And so I'm just wondering if in that first sentence, does it make sense, just to remind us and everyone that that's part of our strategic plan, is building up an adequate CIP?
Well, there's a lot more in your district's strategic plan than the, than just the CIP. So I think if you started out with capital improvement, then you'd have to do the bus allocation, and then you'd have to, and it just would become a laundry list of what's in the strategic plan. I think by keeping it generic, it becomes an umbrella for all of the items that the board has improved in the strategic plan.
Okay, that sounds good. I had a question about technology. Now, technology was also designed to increase. And I don't, I, I'm not sure exactly where we ended up last year, whether there was, was it flat funded or?
It was flat funded largely because, remember that we had a three-year goal in technology, a five-year goal on capital improvement, and a ten-year goal on the buses. So we've achieved our goal in terms of the technology funding, so there's no need to increase there. And, you know, we still have three years to go on the capital plan in order to get to three percent. And we're almost at the end of our bus replacement cycle because the board accelerated it two years ago. Then we, you know, kind of backed off last year. And, you know, based on the conversations we have on start time, we may have a different proposal in terms of accelerating it again through a lease, which we did two or three years ago. So the conversation about how to keep that item on track vis a vis the strategic plan may be Sue and I presenting a different way of purchasing the buses in order to make sure we don't overwhelm the budget with new vehicles. And we can do that through a lease purchase. If that's the direction the board chooses to go on late start.
Sarah?
I'm not going to lie, I'm having heart palpitations. This is. And I think I'm struggling because even last year, I was uncomfortable coming in at saying three percent. And so now we're saying three point two five, and I'm going. So, you know, when, when Al asks, is this completely off the mark, tell us now. I can't say completely off the mark. It is pushing my comfort zone as far as I can push it. And it's in fact, a little bit beyond. So I, so I, I don't know. I'm not uncomfortable with the, the verbiage. I'm not uncomfortable with the way of looking at it that way. I am uncomfortable with the three point two five, and how uncomfortable, I'm not quite sure yet.
I hear you.
Sarah, would a possibility be to look at what three point two five would look like, to look at what three looks like, to see?
Yeah, that would probably be helpful.
I mean, to see what you'd have to give up.
Yeah, I mean, because I think, you know, I think there are times when I, when we look at what's best for kids and when we look at what's best for education, and I think that putting our money into, I'm all for putting our money into professional development and quality educators. I'm less interested in the bells and whistles. And I think sometimes I go around and I see lots of bells and whistles, and I say, I don't know what that's doing for our kids. And so I just wonder if that point two five could, could be streamlined with fewer bells and whistles. And I don't know.
I'm just, could you expand, like an example of?
Technology is a lot of it. This is so minute, but supplies, to be honest, that, that, like, I'm not talking about teacher supplies, but I am shocked that I do not have to purchase school supplies for my elementary school kid. And they're all provided, and that's surprising to me. And again, that's just a, that's tiny. I know that means like nothing in a budget, but it's those kinds of things. That's what I'm thinking of.
So, so with things like supplies, doesn't that really help because there are some families that are more able to get supplies and others not? And it helps us to, in some ways, give each child a level of opportunity. I, I think you're talking about expenditure that's going to be an expenditure, and I think that's the value of public education, is that we try to average out and give everyone that opportunity. And technology in some ways, you know, so many kids have technology, a lot of kids don't have technology. And, you know, we heard, we heard from the commissioner talking about the differences in different school districts. And I think some of those expenditures, if we're making it equal to being an Oyster River student, that that's very important.
Well, and I think the, the technology to me is not so much, again, I, I'm not saying all technology. I'm saying there are some things that could be done equally as well, equally as engaging without technology as with. And, and I do not mean all technology. I'm not speaking against smart boards. I think the things that I see particularly, the middle school teachers do with smart boards, and the engagement that they're able to get is amazing. But I, I just, that's where my, I mean, and I can go through and I can come up with my list of things that I see around that I go, is that really? You know?
Well, I think to have this discussion without Josh here, I mean, I'm a little bit, we're, we're going to have a chance to, to sit down and, you know, we can talk specifically about what his budget includes. I had one.
Go ahead.
I think that a question, and I'm not saying this is something we should do, but I think it might be something we might want to look at, that if we anticipate that the elementary schools, elementary school enrollment is going to be smaller next year, particularly in the fourth grade, you know, would there be the possibility of a teacher incentive for elementary, you know, so that you could, you know, through retirement, you could contract the elementary school staff, which might save a position, which then could, again, offset some of this?
Yep, and that's one of those conversations we've yet to have. It's part of our contractual obligation with the guild. And in preparation for that particular issue, I asked the guild to survey their membership. And in fact, they went beyond their membership and surveyed the entire staff. And they've indicated that there's over two dozen employees, teacher employees, who would consider retirement if the incentive was there. And you might recall that three years ago, when we did this, the school board got quite agitated because we didn't get any savings. Two years ago, we got on top of that, and as a result, we have been generating savings. In fact, I just looked at the draft of the, the middle school staffing account, and it's about sixty thousand dollars less than the current year. And I said to Tim, who was working with me today, because Sue was at a workshop, did we miss somebody? And Jay was sitting there, and he said, no, it's because of this person, this person, this person, this person. So the administrative team has become very disciplined in approaching new hires. And so what I also would be concerned about is if we did this, you know, like, all at once, because it doesn't serve our staff needs and it doesn't serve our district needs. And here's how I'm thinking. You know, we're watching the Mohermit staff in particular, as Tom alluded to, it'll be smaller by one staff member. We're watching the middle school gradually get smaller. It's going to take us about three years of decrease in enrollment before, you know, we would have an impact on staffing at the middle school. So, you know, what I wanted to do is lo, with the board's support, is enter into a more strategic conversation with the guild around the idea of retirement incentives so that it would play out that we could have retirees going just about the same time that we would have a decrease in enrollment along the lines that Tom alluded to at Mohermit. And therefore, we could avoid, you know, massive layoffs of essentially young staff that we've brought in because they don't have the seniority. And again, I go back to many conversations I've had with Denise, you know, I don't ever want this to come across as, we don't like our senior staff. We have fantastic senior staff. But we do also have senior staff who are on their own, beginning to think about, is this the time for me to retire? And what the retirement incentive does is if they retire before their retirement age, it gives them enough money to cover their health insurance for a couple of years. And that's really what we were trying to do, is create a bridge between those who wish to retire because you, you all know that the New Hampshire retirement system provides no health insurance, so they have to get to, you know, sixty-five so that the, they can get on to Medicaid. So, you know, the idea isn't that we should go willy-nilly into a retirement incentive because it does not serve the district's needs. But at the same time, we do have a couple of senior staff who are coming to work every day in pain, who have medical issues. We have, you know, a decrease in enrollment, and I think that if we could come to a plan with the guild, we could, you know, do this in such a way that it would be advantageous to our staff and, and to the district. And so that's my thought around it. I haven't had that conversation with the guild yet, beyond them giving me the idea that there are about two do, two dozen people who would, who are ready to retire if an incentive was provided. And we see the difference. So when the retirement incentive was provided, we had over two dozen people retire. In the last school year, we had two people retire. So, you know, the staff, a very committed staff, but, you know, they're concerned about their own personal well-being as they go into retirement, and we're concerned about the overall cost of education. So it goes back to my initial conversation when I first came in, we've got to come up with that sweet spot where it's a win-win. Win for the district, win for the retiring employee, so.
That'd be something we might be talking about down fairly soon.
Yeah, I would put it on the next agenda to get some guidance from the board, and then I could have a conversation with the guild.
So I completely understand your reservation. Actually, it's not just even the core percent, it's the revenue side, because we've, you know, that's about, what, five hundred thousand? Five hundred fifty thousand, if you have three hundred and fifty from revenue and two hundred thousand from the benefit stabilization. So it, so the concern would be, just because you have revenue, you don't have to spend it. It's like, spend it, or spend it wisely. And there's this, you know, since I get a more holistic view of budgets now between the town and the school, this great story with that is, I was at the transfer station, and I was, you know, asking about metal, and they're like, oh, yeah, yeah, we sell metal, we get revenue from that. I'm like, oh, I can, I can do that. And she's like, yeah, you know, I tried to make the town, you know, two hundred dollars from the metal, and you guys spend twenty thousand. So it really is, I got a really clear picture of that. So, you know, trying to have like a sense of, of, you know, prioritizing, and just because you have the money, you don't spend it. So I, I think that's what you're trying to say.
So would it be agreeable to the board if Dr. Morse came back with the amend, with the kind of changes that we've been talking about? We haven't voted on the changes, but, you know, we could, you know, if he would come back with that modified board goal, and then we would vote on that the next meeting, considering he doesn't, he said he, he doesn't need a vote on that tonight. Is that, is that agreeable to people? So it's on the agenda for the next meeting, is that okay?
Could we add something to the budget to pay us extra for sitting on these chairs?
We're down the once a year on these chairs now, Maria.
No, this is the second time.
Yeah.
Twice in the spring.
You won't do it in the spring, I promise.
So, okay to move on? Okay, so we need a, I think we're down, a motion to approve Catherine Ford as affirmative action officer. Do you have that motion? Maria?
I saw a move.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Denise. Is there discussion on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
This to me is a really important office, and I'm wondering how much it's advertised or made.
Yep, we advertise it in all of our documents because we're, one, required to by the federal government, across the staff. Any communications from the special ed office. Is it in our handbooks at this point, the affirmative action piece? Yeah, it's in our handbooks. So it's, it's pretty widely distributed. If somebody has a concern, we, and they address that concern to a building principal or myself or whomever, they're immediately referred to Catherine. And if Catherine does have a male backup, so if something is uncomfortable for her to handle, she can turn to, is it Michael? You know, Mike at the high school. So it's, we take it very seriously, they've been, both been trained. They go to annual workshops to make sure they're current, so it's, it's a significant role.
Because I know the, what's put out there to most parents is you start with the teacher, but you don't have to.
Correct.
And that's what I want parents to know, that this is, especially on our policies around discrimination. They don't have to go to the teacher.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody had a, yeah, if somebody had a concern about me, they can go directly to the board. You know, it's, you know, that's, the process is, you have to go, you know, normally you'd go through a chain of command, but if you don't want. They can skip the whole thing if there's an issue related to, absolutely. Yeah, and we've, we've.
Benny too.
Yep, we've been doing that.
We don't, Benny, I don't recall, but most know that they do come directly to me, the principals know, so.
Well, but the parent that doesn't want to go to the principal, how do they know where to find you? to find you?
It is on the website, so I have gotten calls directly from parents.
You're going to have to come up, I guess, if you're going to.
Yes, sir. A phone call or an email from a parent, sometimes it started directly with me. Most times, parents, I think, do feel comfortable, honestly, going right to their principal first, because that's who they're connected with, and then that, they get in contact with me right away. But it is put out there that I am the direct contact. It's in the handbooks, it's on the website.
Not just for special ed?
Not just for special, everybody.
No, 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 yeah.
And the reports that Catherine writes are for me to read, and she has recommendations. I would tell you, she does a really great job at this, in this role.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had a motion in the second, right?
Who made it?
Maria and Denise seconded.
Okay, are you ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. We're not going to approve the board goal tonight. We've already approved the two field trips, so we're to the school board committee updates. Done? Okay. Help a comment? Done? Okay. Opposing action, so we have the late start forum. Not setting anybody down, am I? Okay. On the 13th, we have the late start forum. What is the town, Durham Town Council meeting?
So this is my annual trek to each of the town governance boards. So I'm doing Durham first, and then I think I do Lee, and then Medbury. And basically, give them an overview of where we are at this point in the school year, share our successes, and give them a direction, you know, in terms of where the board's goals are and so forth. So it's a chance for us, for me to interact with the council and the two select boards.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And then we have the regular school board meeting on the 19th, and then the, then you'll meet with the town of Lee on the 24th. Okay?
Yep.
That's it? Have a motion to adjourn? Maria?
I move adjourn.
What? We're having so much fun.
Surprise, surprise. Seconded by Dan. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Can we adjourn?
I have a hand wave.